February 6, 2014. I think we've been in the planning commission meeting. Your roll call, please.
Dixon. Matt Moore, here. Heiser White.
Here.
Motul.
Here.
Priscilla.
Here.
Schneider is absent. And Moody.
Here.
And there's five present and two apps.
Okay, we can see. First, item on the agenda. To set the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Or do you have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Tom, a second from Donald. How is the favor of approval of the agenda say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? None opposed, motion carried. Okay, for agenda carry. Next order is approval of minutes from the February 12th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Sure.
Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Sylvia's seconds. All those a favor approval of February 12th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? None, okay. So minutes. Next item, system comments, non-agenda related topics, no action will be taken. Is there anybody out there that wants to step up and put it? Seeing none, we'll move on to planning commission and staff reports and comments there. Is there anything taken out?
Chair, commission, I got a few items to note. So first, I would like to point out the obvious of any planning commission member. We obviously do not have a name tag, so hope you're writing this down. Jana Heiser White, so. She, this is obviously her first meeting and was appointed by the city council up there during their last city council meeting just last week. So please welcome her. And Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to give an opportunity to the member, maybe just tell the commission a little bit about themselves and maybe kind of why they requested to be on the commission.
Jana, again, aye.
Yes, and Jana Heiser White, I've been in Larnie for more than 15 years now. During that time, I've served on a couple of different boards. I've served on board of the co-op, I've served on board of Larnie, not just for school. But I've been, you know, fairly active in the community and wanted an opportunity to just be a part of, you know, the ongoings of the community. And contribute my background in ecology and bio two chemistry. So I've worked on many things related to policy and planning and in particular environmental cleanup. But I hope to just be able to serve my community.
Well, thank you and welcome, welcome to the commission, we're up from a board. Okay, anything else there?
Yes, so a couple other quick items and I'll bring, I'll let Joseph actually come up with it as well. I had sent out an email regarding airport third plan meeting. That will be this Thursday from four to seven o'clock at the Cowboy Aviation Building. This is a very airside centric planning process that they've been working on. So think like runways and that type of things, not necessarily enterprise airport side of things. The businesses that would be airport related. So this is very aviation FAA related type planning that they've been doing. This is things like extending runways longer and, you know, making sure that hybrid margins are being met for areas around it, stuff like that. So staff, planning staff had a meeting with their main consultants last week. Just kind of get an update of kind of the process and things. They asked us to do a little review of one of the sections of the plans. It's pretty, it's not a traditional planning crack process where they're, you know, thinking more like along the lines of things that you normally would. But I want you to be aware of it so that if you were interested, they're doing this open house from four to seven. You can go up there and kind of check out the information they're presenting and feel free to do that if you want, no obligation. So.
How would it affect planning, so to speak?
You know, I think probably the biggest thing usually with airports is it with airports, they do have certain requirements for how tall buildings. And how much noise essentially is projected from an airport, i.e. planes taking, taking off and landing. And so a lot of times, and the city, Larnie does have regulations for things like height and zoning in and around an airport to ensure that, you know, they don't have a huge tower that a plane run into. Or a silo on an arm that the plane run into. Or they, they put a subdivision in, but they cannot complain about the noise. So, so that doesn't necessarily stop them, you are correct. That's, you find lots of cases out there and lots of news stories about that. So that's kind of the general gist of it. You know, it's not a traditional planning process in terms of like building designs, landscaping and where pathways would go or things like that. That's not really what they're looking at, you know, where a fuel goes, where a fence goes, where like it goes. So. So anyway, but if you're interested, it's at the Cowboy Aviation Building. So just if you don't know where that's at, it's not the terminal where you fly in and out of, it's the building next door to it. Kind of to the north of that building, so. So you know. We, just as a reminder, we did publish the North Fourth Street RFP. I mentioned that to you at your last meeting, so I just want to use every opportunity, if there's no members of the public on or anything like that, just that it's out there. If you do receive any questions, feel free to send them to me and we can try to get a RFP. We have set the urban systems advisory committee meeting for this year for March 26th, one to two thirty. If you do not recall, number Matt Moore is your liaison for the planning commission on that committee. And so they'll, that'll be kind of our annual meeting. Just as a reminder, for our member, USAC is the urban systems advisory committee. They are the group that reviews long range transportation planning, mainly streets. And the location of said streets as well as long term funding that is passed through the state of Wyoming through the federal government. Essentially, the city of Larnie has to have the urban systems advisory committee. In order to receive the funding that is passed through, that group is made up of city and county people. So it's a joint city county board. And they have, yeah, liaisons for council, for planning commissions from at large. They're different for both city and account levels, so that's going to be the impact of it. So yeah, next meeting, March 26th.
So decisions are made at that meeting?
Correct, yep. Ultimately, what then happens is the map, if there's any changes to the map, it would have to go through this body as well, city council. And then done by ordinance, so. Right now, I haven't received any requests for changes or modifications up to this point, but there's still some time for that. Okay? And then, just looking at my list here. Jason, are you going to talk? And then I'm going to turn it over to you, Joseph.
Chair Commission, I just wanted to report that last Tuesday, the 20th, we did have a west side meeting for community members. It was well attended as far as these things go. We had two sessions, one in the morning afternoon time around 11:00. And around 20 neighbors show up for it and start a very robust conversation of where they are seeing the west side neighborhood go in the future, or hopes. They hope it will go. In the evening, we had around 39 people. That was, some of them were repeat customers, decided to come in for, again, come again. But the, the conversation continued to continue to be robust and very passionate folks in the west side. But I think our pursuit interns got a lot to work with. From this point, we're going to be moving towards a work session with city council later this month. Later this month. No, the next one, well. Sorry, later in March. And so. We're continuing on this process and so if there's anybody in the community who is wanting, wanting to be interviewed for this or anybody. This, this process will continue until the end of May, so. Additionally, at our last meeting, we did talk about the extension of passenger railroad through Wyoming and we had. Fisher did ask about a letter of support. We could get permission in front of the city manager's office and are creating resolution for city council to sign in support of passenger rail and railway in southern Wyoming. It does look, there was a regional meeting discussing the possible passenger railways throughout the United States in some of these smaller segments. The one that's on the table right now for southern Wyoming is between Denver and Los Angeles. It would start in Denver, come up through the front range, run along I-80 and then go down through Salt Lake all the way to Los Angeles. Granted, this is still fairly early stages and who knows where this is going to go, but that is essentially.
So what was it? How, how did we get to Salt Lake?
So it goes from Denver along the front range in Cheyenne, heads west along I-80 and then comes down into Salt Lake.
Sweet.
Through, through Lurk.
Man, that's.
Yeah. And so.
You're not your, your hobo sack.
But it's exciting and we hope that it continues and that it has a little bit of traction.
And I think, and I think the possibility that it could go to Larnie is why we need to stay involved in the process and kind of just keeping track of things. Regionally, it's pretty important that they was to occur, so anyway, we're, we're staying on, on top of that. Even though it's a little slow of a process, to be honest.
What continue does that letter go, that letter support go?
It goes to U.S. DOT Department of Transportation, the federal railways administration. Yeah, they're the ones who are tasked with studying the impacts and possibilities throughout the United States.
Joe, give me a sense of some of the issues on that west side meeting.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot. People are concerned about potentially zoning areas that will impact them. There are various industrial zoning and as it currently is, people could have fairly intense uses directly next to their houses. There's also some issues with some infrastructure and some stormwater that people over there are dealing with constantly. Granted, it is an older neighborhood and so these problems are pretty prolific in all over. Especially over there. There, there has been some talk of design standards, an overlay district potentially over there. At this point, we're not, we're not close to that point yet, we're still kind of in fact finding images. But there's scale, you know, bigger homes versus smaller, or bigger lots versus smaller lots. So. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of talking about things that people really enjoyed about the neighborhood. And some of those were just how quiet it was, the history in the area. A lot of people talked about the small lots and how they might be squint little homes. So. Which is kind of a few.
Right, yeah, it's just kind of a labor force. Thanks, Joe. Any other questions?
Joe, there's going to be a presentation in this room next week on the net zero climate. Is that something the planning folks should attend?
It's something that we've been involved with pretty frequently. It's within a different department. And, but we've, we've reviewed the plan a few times and. Have had no major comments or changes with it. I think probably, I mean, for my part, for my part, I will probably attend, but maybe not in an official capacity.
The Chair, if, if, if that topic is of interest to you, I mean, you might want to listen in. I mean, there's a lot of really interesting information aside as far as the city's long term approach to going net zero. I mean, that's, you know, right, that's fundamentally what it's talking about. So, I mean, it's like an 80-page document, so, you know, I mean, it talks, there's a lot in there.
Light reading.
It's some light reading, but if that's a topic of interest, you know, that encourages you to at least listen in. I mean, it's, there's some really good, really good information that I think provides a good vision as to where the city desires to go related to that topic, so.
Any, any other questions or comments from the commission, Chair? Seeing none, we'll move on to the west side of the commission, please. Blow users, expert data communications, and as the Chair, I have one.
This is a past conference of interest at the last meeting. We, there's CUP, Busco, it's ten. I did not realize at the time that he had done some work at the rifle range until after the meeting, he submitted a bill. For work he had done out there six months late and we had to, the treasurer had to pay him for a copy of the bill so we could show that he paid, paid him the money. But that, I didn't realize it at the time that it was the same guy until after the meeting, so I don't know if that'll affect anything or not, but go ahead.
Is it, is it, okay, and I finally get to use this?
We're not up around you. You know, I'm, I'm still there, yeah. He just better not run out there past the 16th. I'm going to just give a comment, excuse me.
Okay, cool, thanks, Tom.
All right.
Okay. Okay, next item of business is conditional use permit. Dash 24 dash 01, 450 North Third Street, Lumber Yard, Derek goes in.
Yeah, Chair, Commission, the item for you is a request for conditional use for 450 North Third Street. It is most known to people in Larnie as blow door lover. As you'll see in the staff report, the staff report is quite lengthy. What I want to point out is that the very beginning of the staff report, we really summarize the changes that are being requested for this conditional use. To point out for all of us here is that if you do not recall, the planning commission considered this item. And ultimately approved this item on May 9th, 2022. Essentially for what you see going on currently at its location. The current conditional use before you is actually an expansion of what was already approved in that original conditional use. And so if you look in the staff report, I did include that conditional use from 2022 in the report, just so that you can see the totality of what you went through originally. I felt that that was important and helped though focus you on what was being requested with this conditional use. The current conditional use that you have before you is related, is related mostly to the easternmost building on that site. Which is the retail component, if you're familiar with going in there current today. Under the original condition that you said was proposed, the retail building essentially was going to remain as is. Except for an area that's located to the rear of the building, that's currently used for storage, was being pushed into the new storage buildings that are constructed today. If you go out there today, you can see those. And that that space was going to be converted into retail. If you're familiar with the site, the building essentially had kind of a jog in it. After evaluation by the owners and by the applicant, they decided to kind of square the building off essentially, make it just a big old rectangle. Because there's an expansion of the retail space and a change in the site. It does require them to go through the conditional use process again. So within the staff report that you have here, what I, what I've done is I really tried to focus in on the changes to the site. So one thing I'd like to point out, if you look at the original conditional use staff report, the conditions of approval, the building design for the two warehousing buildings that are located on the west end of the site. All that pretty much remains the same. Additionally, almost all of the parking area to the south of the retail building, as well as the parking area that's adjacent to Third Street, has remained the same. Landscaping, the improvements where the curb and gutter, actually a lot of curb and gutter, but lots already installed now at this point. The, for you though, is the consideration that there is some changes. One, an expansion of the building into this area that was kind of originally just not part of the plan. And two, the facade of the building, so the facade now has to be changed when you expand the building. Now things have changed and so they've provided us new elevations or updates to what the building will look like. And then three, the other main change is that the area around the building, since the building is being pushed out, the circulation around the building changes and some of the parking changes.
Question, is, is here this expansion, is that southwest corner of the, of the building just built in that, that make a rectangle?
Chair, yes, correct.
Yep.
Probably the, the, the largest differences you will see is the building expansions, the actual extra square footage. The parking, from the original plan, there was some park angled parking for some larger vehicles, so like some truck and a trailer, for instance. That now has been converted just to headed parking along the building. And then finally, the actual building look or the facade of the building on that south side and on the side has changed a little bit from what was proved. What staff will note is that during the original approval and under this current approval, the facade changes that they propose, we still meet our design requirements for our code. And so we feel that those changes are appropriate and make sense based on what they've shown. The building expansion in and of itself is actually not that large, 2,500 square feet. Probably the largest change on the site is related to parking. If you review our staff report, we included some information about some of the details related to parking. But what I'd like to point out is that on really original conditional that you so is created in 2022, the site was deficient by about 10 parking spaces. Under the new proposal, as they updated things, or sorry, five spaces, it was deficient by. With the new square footage and the changes in parking, they actually improved their parking deficiency by a couple spaces. And now they're only deficient by two parking spaces. During the original conditional use approval, which is something that you all consider, staff felt that the deficiency in parking was, was okay for this type of a site. What's fairly unique about this site, and if you've ever been to pretty much any lumberyard, is you pull into the lumberyard, you may park. For instance, if you're running into the retail store to buy something off the shelf. But ultimately, you typically advance into the, somewhere to the rear of the site, or in this case, to the west of the site where you're picking up materials. And you're usually not actually using parking spaces, you're using, again, those are loading areas depending upon where the racks and materials are located. During the original conditional use approval, we felt the five spaces, the deficiency of the five spaces was okay. With this change, it's actually improving that even more and we would feel that it would still remain adequate for the site. Finally, as we noted, there is some access changes around the building. All the driveways and drive aisles do meet our requirements and most importantly, we're still able to get our emergency vehicles through those spaces. Based upon the part of the range that that's, that's being located. So really with that, when we look at the requirements for conditional use approval. Really, we have no concerns and felt that all those conditions of approval were being met. As I noted, the largest one being probably related to off, the changes to off-street parking, that is one of your specific items of approval and the conditions, which we felt was appropriate to play. A little bit of extra explanation there. Aside from that, any of the areas, the conditions really didn't change or affect the site based upon their addition. Finally, with all applications such as the conditional use, we do do mail notice to adjacent property owners. We do have posted sign at the site and you do publication in the newspaper. We received no public comments about the proposed changes. So with that, staff, staff does recommend approval of conditional use that proposed. I do know that the applicants and applicant representative are available and are here at the meeting as well. If you have any specific questions for them, otherwise I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Derek from?
That's a pretty minimal change.
Seems pretty innocuous to me. Seeing none, does the applicant want to say anything?
Good, thank you. Derek said no.
So no questions?
Comments in the public?
That's right. Anyone in the public want to make a comment? Seeing none, or don't?
Derek, would there be any additional traffic line between those and Third Street?
I mean, probably not. Not at the moment, probably we did, we did do traffic analysis with this project under the site plan process and it wasn't good. I'll, I'll say also that the new traffic signal that said, what is it, right there by Third and to the north, the one that's to the north, yeah. Flint, the new one that was installed there was strategically placed by BIOT to regulate traffic between there and your next light, which is a X.
Yeah, I'm just saying that people on heavy loads and they set up onto the third, but what's the next point?
Any other comments from the commission, Derek or the applicant? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I have one. I move to approve a conditional use permit for the establishment of lumberyard on property zone C2. General Commercial District located at 450 North Third Street. Based on findings of fact and conclusions of law and subject to all staff's recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Donald, a last minute discussion on this motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dixon is absent, Matt Moore?
Aye.
Heiser White?
Aye.
Motul?
Aye.
Priscilla?
Aye.
Schneider absent, and Moody?
Aye.
That is five guesses and zero notes.
Okay, there's going to be a permit approved. Go get them, below on. Very good, very good. And, and that's, it's nice to see that site doing what it's doing.
It's, it's got, works a little better.
Yeah.
Get more air to start.
Okay, next item is a work session, review of city council goals for 2024, Derek.
Chair, Commission, so the next two items are something that is just a little bit different and something that we have never done. I each year do typically forward on the council goals to the planning commission, just for your education. I've always felt that it was important to have a planning mission and see. I've always felt that it was important to have a planning commission and see. What goals were adopted by the Lary City Council, which is who you make your recommendations to. And so I've done that over the years, every single year, the Lary City Council. Have gets together and formulates goals and adopts them by resolution, just like you see here before you. One thing that's a little bit different is putting this actually on your agenda. And and having it here for you all to at least take a look at and give you the opportunity for just some internal discussion. This city manager requested that we do this with our boards and commissions. Although I was doing it informally and not in anything like this, I do think it's pretty important. Just so that you have an idea of where the Lary City Council has their priorities in terms of. The next year. So one thing, what I would like to do is just just simply go through a few of these, especially the ones that really. Pertained to the planning commission, at least in my eyes. You'll see they've kind of broken up their city holes into some major areas of interest. Your first one being infrastructure, planning and investment. You take a look at kind of milestone A as well as milestone B. You know, you were talking about. You know, increasing accessibility, how how we have things built within the built environment. So you know, think sidewalks and streets and pathways. All these things are things that you as a planning commission see through, maybe let's say a conditional use permit like we just saw. Through subdivision process, through some planning a subdivision. A lot of times, some of those details really the planning commission isn't getting too much into. For instance, like on a subdivision, there are sidewalks there, but very rarely is the planning commission. Talking very much about the actual sidewalk location because the city has standards. We require sidewalks in our subdivisions, they must be built with developments. So a lot of times, that review is kind of more at a staff level, but sometimes you do see that definitely with individual sites. Related to the conditional use process where maybe you feel that there is a better route within the site. Especially like on a large site, for instance, or maybe on a site that has some constraint like hill or river or something, so. So definitely milestone A and B, I think, is kind of good, i- is good to kind of have in the back of your mind in terms of when you're looking at projects. Milestone C, this is a conclude business plan for stormwater management and implement hall implement policies. This is related to your, the stormwater focus group. Although largely not our focus, planning's focus, when I say ours. You know, the planning commission has talked about that in past meetings. And you have like a matter more attending those meetings as a planning commission liaison to. That that process, so I think definitely C is kind of landing in your wheelhouse. Obviously, stormwater items, stormwater issues come up, whether it's from the public or just your knowledge. Especially related to subdivisions. Milestone D, non-motorized and alternative transportation options. Once again, I think that this is kind of peripherally discussed in a lot of the topics that we have for you, whether it's subdivisions and where. Multi-use trail should go, you all considered that during our West Slope subdivision, that was considered what? Two, three months ago, for instance. And so I think that's definitely a component that you consider. Master planning processes often have this included in it, you know, where trails, where parks might go. That's been considered and that was looked at even somewhat during our growth plan process, though it recently considered. Milestone E. Grants, grant seeking isn't something that the commission does, but I think it's important just to point out the emphasis that the council related to investment in water, sewer and street. Infrastructure. Those things lead to economic growth and development typically in a community, and so I think the council recognizes that. Milestone F, working with broadband. Just for the knowledge of the commission, very limited role in that in terms of specifically, you know, finding broadband. For our community, however, through our subdivision review process, we do contact all of our broadband and net providers. So that they can make sure that they have the right needs and things like that, so that we don't cycle at least. Expansion of those networks within our community through our franchise utilities.
Sure, just. One question, in the different goal groups, are are these. Organized by priority or they're part of it, just all considered equal at this point?
Oh, yeah, no prioritization, like the first one out there isn't necessarily the most. Yeah, yeah.
So as much as we can get done, right?
Yep, it's a, you know, I think it's, you know, large, large tasks, I mean. So then kind of jumping into goal two, so inter-agency collaboration. Milestone A about the Alton County Mental Health Board, definitely not something that's in your all in in your wheelhouse. Same with milestone B. Definitely not something, milestone C, reinstating the Alton County Transit Authority. And completing a plan for public transportation, I believe this is going to be a future item that that will be looked at by by the commission. With the, I think it was the last meeting, the Alton County Transit Board was established at least to councils, am I right? As I look at council member county sitting behind us. So that, as that starts to reestablish, I think, and the planning process goes forward, I think that'll be definitely something. That this commission will be looking at. Evaluating cities' boards and commissions. This is definitely a item. That we have done for this board at a staff level. You're a pretty valuable board and the different roles that you play, although some of them very limited. We do find you a very valuable board. This is something, though, that from the council's desires to look at all these things and see if we have any places for efficiencies and. If there are places where staff or liaisons or themselves are spending time, or maybe they shouldn't. And then milestone E revamped town and gown, community and collaboration with education and government partners. Definitely in the within community economic development and planning, this will be something that we will probably. Get more involved in, especially when we're talking about. Development-related activities on the university campus, town and gown, for those of you that maybe don't know that term. Just meaning the town, IDS, the city, and our relationship with the gown, the university, and so and how that interaction is. So I think definitely something that will be part of. Jumping into goal three. City services and resident engagement. City count and treatment and prevention objectives related to opioids. Not something that you all will be related or dealing with, but the city council is. Milestone B. I'm gonna just simply note this for the education of the planning commission. The enterprise resource planning software is actually a software that has started within our financial division of the city. Our financial software that the city of Lary uses was outdated and antiquated. And our financial software went live just a couple of weeks ago. And has implemented a new modern day software for everything, so that we can track and online inputs and everything. That's very convenient and what every everyone does in the business world, so to speak, in terms of how to manage manage finances. The second part of that is a, is the second part of the planning process, which is really the. Digitization of applications and submittals across all agencies. Everything from parks and recreation to planning to engineering. Where digital submittals, digital uploads, you know. Login information, things like that will be the way which we will take in applications, manage projects. Provide comments, do pretty much everything. So. Although you will not see it directly, you're really handling it directly, your staff, the planning staff. As well as all the rest of the staff in the city will be keeping that. We will definitely, it will be a large change for our community as we go that direction. Currently, we do require pretty much everything digitally, but we use mail and other correspondence methods to. Accept materials, provide comments, this will be a much more fluid and. Program, essentially tracking program that will allow us to manage projects a lot different, a lot differently and more efficiently. Item C, related to nine one one emergency management, not something that you'll be looking at. Milestone D, though, I think is is important for the for the commission to understand. This is raising community awareness about participation in matters being considered by the city council. Engage community by providing meaningful and valuable information about city services and programs. This is all about community involvement and how we improve community involvement. Throughout the time that some of you have been here and that we've, you know, spoke, you know, we always have, do talk about sometimes, you know. How do we get more people out here in the room to participate in the meetings that you have? And I think that that's definitely something the city council really desires to have that public input. You know, you've all seen it, ha- when we have members of the public here. Their participation and the information that they bring to the lobby is important and helps guide decisions to make. Helps us make good decisions truly, that's that's what we want to see, and so. You know, I think, I think being, you know, how we maybe do that. Is is something that I will, I'll talk to you a little bit about maybe in our next item when we get there. But definitely things like divisioning process that we're going through with the west side, I think it's exactly what we're talking about. How do we engage the public and really, you know, start to hear what they what they have to say, how do we do that better? Milestone E, implementing a volunteer program. Not something that the commission really is going to be involved with, but definitely my staff is involved in that, especially. Related to some of our code enforcement activities, snow removal, abaintments, things like that. Milestone F, benchmarks for budget transparency, not something that's really that all for the commission. Since you don't have a budget or or spend money. And then milestone G, completing municipal staffing study, not something also that that is part of your. Number four, economic development. This is, milestone A is talking about improvements along Snowy Rain Road. Thinking about multimodal options, infrastructure improvements that lower the cost for businesses to develop along this corridor. I think, I think what I would say is that although this commission isn't going to be focused on. The actual development, you may review development proposals or see projects come through and having that in mind, I think is important. At a staff level, we look at these things. You know, we've got, we actually have a couple of enforcements that we've enacted. One of those that you heard last meeting, there's a reason why we do that. People look to us, that's we're harsh about, you know, why would we make someone come in and go through the process? That's why I'm making somebody go through the process, it's important that we see a project that someone starting a business meets the standards, the design standards. Parking, things like that, because we want that to elevate the remaining area and provide us an analyst to other development. It's hard to do that when we just let things go, and so. But I think definitely we may have some additional conversations about some of these other things like multimodal options. And the transit authority could play a role about how does maybe transit play a role along snowy rain road, especially out in West Lary. So. Milestone B there. This is related to issues surrounding mobile home parks and rental housing. We, we don't, we haven't had mobile home park conditional use in quite some time. And so what I would say that that's probably one of the larger areas, but you might see something specific to this this goal. But this is definitely something from a staff side of things that we're involved in in terms of. Management of mobile home parks, what's allowed and the and then our, you do do. Annual or by annual reviews of mobile home parks thirty two years. We go through mobile home parks and sure for certain basic compliance standards that are found in our code, so. Milestone C. This is really related to a lot of the things that you've been involved in, related to housing already. This is kind of that next step of things like land baking, land trusts. These schedules or incentives, you know, vacant residential or office conversions. This all really, I would say, if you're going to summarize milestone C, it's all related to housing and the house market. So you've all been involved in some recent code updates over the last two years related to that, and I think that that will continue. Whether it's even able to kind of paying attention to the different things that are happening even at state level potentially related to that. Milestone D, communicating with developers and contractors about any changes in review processes permitting. And engaging private sector partners to assist the city with creating these processes. This is something that. I think from a, you know, directly for planning question, you all are not that involved in, other than. You are sometimes part of the process, right? And having a a good working knowledge of how the process goes and. Showing up to meetings so that we don't have to delay a meeting, because we don't have a quorum, reading your packets so we're prepared for meetings. I think that is, that is part of this process, this makes, you know, the review. Sometimes the approvals go smoother, it allows us to to make sure that we're not. Delaying a project that shouldn't be delayed, or maybe delaying a project that should be delayed, right? I think that's all, I think, I think it plays both ways. The, you know, two, from a, from a standpoint of city side of things, you know, we're, we're doing lots of different outreach options. I think with our new software that I mentioned earlier, that's going to definitely be a component of educating contractors and developers. How to use the software, training sessions, and how to best, how to best use that so that they can get through the process, so. Goal number five, environmental stewardship. Lary Municipal Emissions Plan. An adoption of that, we talked about that a little bit earlier. Not something really that this this commission looks at from a true planning and zoning related item. But definitely. You know, something that could be considered if we were to get a project that that had some sort of special relationship to emissions, actually. Milestone B, adopting a consumptive use plan for the heart and bath and monolith branch operations. This is really related, this is not a traditional planning process when it says plan. Consumptive use is technically about water, it's about the water and usage on the plant or on those two branches, and so. I don't believe that we have all been involved in that as a commission. But we may do some some info meetings as they move forward with that process, because I do think it's of interest and the long-term thinking about. The monolith and bath branches and how they may play a role in future development, I think, so. Implementing ordinances necessary to report a stop protection plan. With the recent adoption of the Casperock Protection Plan just last year. Preparing ordinance changes as necessary to reflect those, that plan would come before this board. So it's definitely something that you may be considering. I think really for the most part, that item, it's just how much time at a staff level we have to start preparing all those things. But definitely something that will be before you. And then. The investigating pilot program for composting to reduce solid waste, not something really in your perfect. And so. I know that was really quick, I I literally just wanted to really briefly touch on this. You know, I would be happy to answer any questions, I know, I I'm not gonna. But council member, not being too much on the spot, but I mean, you know, she was there when they developed these, if you have any, you know, questions about maybe. How something got put together, she probably provides some insight, but I think. If you have any, you know, questions about maybe how something uh, got put together, she probably provides some insight, but I think the key here is just having a working knowledge that these exist out there and that they sometimes play a role in maybe some of the things that come before this plan. So, um, that's really all I have for this. That's all I want to go through on this.
Okay. Thanks Derek. Councilor Columbia, do you have any, any comments on this? You know me.
I just think my only comment would be that these goals are founded in goals that we first established um, two years ago. And then we went through and evaluated the goals that had been met and then looked at refining those goals toward the next step. And so this takes everything that we've been doing for two years and then brings that forward. So, um, I think we've got some, a lot of work to do. Always, and yeah, it's like a lot of plates spinning, but um, I think we're already making headway on some of these things.
Good, thanks for any questions?
Uh, the city used to have a homeless shelter, right?
I, I do not know.
I thought it did.
I think it was uh, the church, I think the Episcopal church.
The Episcopal church, I knew of that, but I didn't know the city-run homeless shelter.
Does the city need a motion?
I, I've been thinking about that and wondering, and especially as some of the rents are uh, being increased astronomically is in our uh, impacting individuals with a limited income and with fixed income. We have some elders, disabled people and vets who are becoming uh, very insecure with housing. So, we're trying to work on that because we anticipate that this could continue to develop this perfect storm where people, where housing is unaffordable and you have very vulnerable populations. Uh, and we have no place for them.
I think there's several volunteer services in town, but I just wonder whether that has a situation where it's gonna get worse.
Right.
And we are working, there's a number of the groups that are coming together in a coalition to work on this, and it includes some of the vet services, uh, vulnerable adult, the healthy aging, uh, university and absence center. And Erin O'Doherty and I from uh, city council. And our next step, it's, it's very heavy with tenant oriented people. We've got legal aid, uh, a variety of organizations. Our next step is to bring in landlords, real estate people, um, loan officers who handle real estate and that type of thing to try and get a coalition where we're working on it together, because what we found out is there were eight or ten of us working on the same thing, same time separately. So we're trying to streamline that and bring our efforts together.
We used to have, well, I was downtown for many years, we had a about a dozen regular homeless, uh, I haven't seen any of them lately, but in the railroad yards and underneath the old bydeh, uh, uh, that seems to have gone away. Now, I doubt that the people just vanished. I mean, there's someplace where these people went. I, I know that churches been doing so good. I used to, whenever I saw anybody even that any potential would be in a bed, I'd drag them up to the region and give them some help, but I, we it's either gone away, so they're somewhere.
They're somewhere, and that's a question that the coalition has, is what is the extent? And so I have a meeting coming up with Chief Brown just because their officers being on the street are going to have a pretty good idea about how many uh, and what hotels they're being housed at, but um, interfaith, uh, family promise, uh, a variety of groups are working on helping people to secure housing. Um, but I, I would like to find that out. I've been tasked with finding that out. And when I do, I'll bring it back to the planning commission as well.
I, I see people acting things who, to me, seem, I don't know if they're doing cars or some people can have smoke with smoke, I just think of the bars where these folks live. And the last survey that was done of homelessness was more than one in town.
Mm-hmm.
So they're out there, and there's some folks I see, they'll be sleepy, folks I see regularly on Third Street that are just going in the day until they can get.
Till they can get shelter, you know?
It's, it's still here.
Mm-hmm.
There, they just.
I think that's a good question, and it's one that came up in the coalition as well, is to try to get a handle on uh, the degree of homelessness that exists and the degree of services.
You say coalition, what, remind me what that is?
Well, it's uh, we haven't named the coalition. It's just a group of NGOs, uh, city council, uh, UW, uh, legal aid, Epsom Center, anyone who's concerned about housing. And uh, we've got our legislatures are part of it. So, um, we're working on changing legislation so that it's more protective of rental rights and would allow renters to actually complain about uh, inadequate standards for living, whereas now if one files a formal complaint by state statute, they can be evicted. So there are no rights for the renter. And so we're, we're trying to work on it in a multi-pronged way. And kind of the point was, a lot of us were doing a lot of work separately. And so we meet twice a month, um, through the vulnerable adults work group and through the healthy aging group.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? So are we done with the resolution?
We're, we're done with that one.
Okay.
So now we're on to the next.
All right, fix the number, got you ready. Work session, um, planning commission goals, something.
All right, uh, commission, uh, I'm gonna keep this, this item pretty short. Um, and here, here's why. This is something that the planning commission has never done. And, um, personally, I, I like this idea. Uh, this is something that I do with my staff, I do within the organization of the city of Larity. Uh, but never been done with planning commission. Um, part of this idea of one, the city manager desiring to have council goals before commission like yourselves, especially when they recommend directly to council. Um, there, there's been discussion at a staff level of the city manager as well, that you know, having the planning commission potentially think about their own goals similar to what the, the council does may be a good idea. I don't think it's a may, I think it is personally. Um, and so what, what I did is I simply provided you what it says within the municipal code. The goal of planning commission is, why are you informed? What is your duty? Uh, and, and it's two pretty short sections. Uh, the first one, it talks about, it's just that you go below the goals and objectives and says review decision-making authority, um, for the planning commission to advise the city council in urban planning, land use studies, urban renewal plans and other types of planning studies in connection. Uh, and then it said basically your technical services. Okay, so kind of plans, right? Urban planning processes. The second one talks about specifically zoning boundaries, appropriate regulations for zoning, and then public hearings to report to the city council. In our case here, this, the planning commission, you know, you see things like conditional use permits, rezoning, subdivisions, uh, probably the largest part of that process being there's public process too that's involved in there. So you're a component of that larger public process. So, what I would like to do tonight is not necessarily try to hang you down tonight and say, what are your top three goals? I don't think that's very fair as a commission. Um, what I do want to do is bring this back maybe in a month, month and a half with some ideas sent either from you as individuals for some discussion or uh, to discuss at a future meeting. Uh, so that we can come up with some large planning commission goals. Now, here would be my general guidance, since this has never been done. Take it or leave it, I guess, is what I'm gonna say. I really don't think that you need to have as a robust set of goals as the city council. Absolutely not. I would ask you not to do that, actually. If I, if I, if you, if I can persuade you, anyway. You're referring from that, okay? Yes, uh, but I do think, I do think that, I do think it would make sense though for the, for the planning commission to consider some of this large planning objectives that it thinks that it would like to accomplish over the next year. Uh, the whole purpose of this one is for yourselves to have an idea, maybe some, some direction. But two, I would like to provide those to the city council so that they have the knowledge and weather. Uh, where maybe some of your large goals or objectives also lie in terms of what you hear as planning. Uh, one thing that I would say, when I, when I kind of look at this broad picture of what the planning commission does, and then I think back to the last item that we just talked about, which was the planning officials. Uh, one of the things that I, I would like to see, definitely that's the only suggestion I'm gonna give to this commission is, I, I think, how do we just better improve our outreach to the public in terms of what this body does and the importance it plays just in the recommendations that go to council and the decisions that you make. Uh, this is something that at a staff level, we've talked actually a lot about. Um, and we think that in the future, we, they actually have some opportunities, so maybe some budget for the commission to, to do some of that. And so I think when I, when I think about these broad goals that could come out of this commission, that's one definitely, I think that, um, uh, could be a really, a really good goal. And it's something that I think that whether it lands on your goals or not, I would like to, I would like to start working on over the next year. And just, how do we just better get the work out? And I, and I, you know, it's a, it, it's kind of a tough thing to do, um, especially what we've noticed within the profession of planning and that we've seen within, I'm just gonna say government in general since COVID. Uh, interaction with the public and the ability to get the public engaged and real meaningful discussion has been difficult, um. People just don't wanna do it. They don't wanna be part of the process. And so it's how do we change what we're used to doing and how we've done it in the past? And how do we revamp that so that we can have that, that, that voice heard? Uh, you know, the process that we're working on at the west side, we're doing some different things that we've never done in this community to try and engage the public. And that's gonna be part of what our students are putting together in terms of their, uh, research that they're doing. To just, we're just trying it out. We're, we're, we're kind of testing the waters to see, is there a better way? Is there a different way to engage? So, you know, I, I don't really wanna spend a whole lot more talking about ideas and things unless the commission does feel free to do that. I'm not gonna say it myself. Uh, but I think that, you know, to give you some time to think about what you might want to accomplish and what goals, those goals might be, maybe three or five or something. And I think that that's a, a great start to just seeing how this process works. So, uh, with that, that's, that's really what I want to go over for this item and be happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions from commissioners there?
Well, I, Tom, just some ideas that I've such a sense of, that I've been kicking around. I think it would be helpful for both the commission and for the general public. We were to have possibly a work session or a public meeting. I think where we have a vision for growth in Laramie. What do we, we have the urban renewal plan, we have the urban growth area plan, and we have the goals in the twenty forty goals and the twenty thirty goals, but what might help is if we do this under the umbrella of an overall vision of how we want Laramie to grow and see if we can get some public interest in that. I think you would want to invite contractors, developers, if we can find them. I'd have to turn over a few rocks to find some, but we could get an overall vision of what, where we wanna go with the city. I think that would get more public interest. And it would also give, which we generally redo a CUP or we do subdivision. Right, but we don't really see what you see of the other things that are going on around the area, like the one on, uh, uh, on Thirtieth Street and up on top of the hill, and then Doug Samuelson's one, and then the one on, uh, thirtieth and, uh, by the university, by the university farm. We did one and then we did the other, but those actually are gonna interact with each other. Those subdivisions, and we'd like to see how we could see a vision that starts coordinating all that. I mean, so give us some kind of goals, I don't know, maybe we can. But I, I think that might help, and it might help with the public too. Particularly on the west side, I think we need to really, the west side is a hot bit of activists. I mean, they're the most active, activist people around, because they don't think the city's ever gonna do anything for it. So if we can get them involved early, like, uh, two students are trying to do, I think that would help a lot, but giving a, a vision for where the city, where the commission and what interest there is from developers and builders might, you know, and a general thing here. Do it once a year or twice a year and say, this is what we'd like to see doing, this is what we've gotten the works. I just, I think that would help.
Yeah, I mean, on that vein, I, I'd like to have some conscious quantification of estimates of what's gonna happen to the front range in, in Laramie, of people coming up and whether it's climate change, migration, um, you know, is, is it's not really defining, we're gonna go from, from thirty thousand people to forty thousand people over the next five years because of A, B, and C factors that seem to be moving in a direction of, of populating Laramie, or, or not populating it. You know, I mean, and all of your other, your water supplies, your infrastructure is all domino, of what. And, 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 and on these planning studies, we've seen, I've never really felt that that has been articulated of, of what, you know, I mean, you can, you can say, well, you know, the growth in Wyoming communities goes up two percent and and, and it's just this general statistical thing that really Wyoming is pretty useless in my, in my view. But to say, what is happening in Laramie would be its geography, its position to the front lane, its attractiveness to a lot of different demographics. Um, and that could, could be drivers for, for growth and have some say, you know, make some statements about what where they think that's gonna go.
Well, I think, yeah, we definitely would want to include the university and something like that. Let's face it, they're the, they're the big town in the world.
And their role is going down, you know, and, and so it's, it's not, it's, that's not necessarily going in the right direction, and, uh, higher education is not very popular right now. So I, I don't know, I mean, that, that would just be part of the mix of what this town and gallon. Of what this town and gallon place is 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 facing going forward and it just. Doesn't seem to be a real identification of what is unique about Larrity that. That is going to affect growth.
Well, let's rebuild machine gun picks order for growth. All there is to it, we aren't gonna grow, I'd like to see. An overall vision of what that grows, what is like surreal, look like the stretch between Fort Collins and Walmart. You know, where just bulldoze all our empty space and put up gray houses.
Okay. Donald, you had a question?
So I wondered if there was, there was a sentence in there about looking and so on, so on. Uh, is the zoning? The types of zoning like L R one and the, oh, is that sentence, so is that a universal? Uh categorization?
No, I mean, it's it's Larrity centric, yeah, it's Larrity centric, so. Each of those districts have definitions, each of those districts have certain uses that that's found within our municipal code. Is that like kind of what you're asking or?
Uh, what I'm asking is related to the ozone, not ozone, but uh the ozone. Cause when we had that, remember we had that complaint?
Yep.
Uh someone who wanted, who bought a house and it was adjacent to what they thought was uh. Greenfield Park, open, open area. And then you listed all the things that can go in. It's basically a holding zone for large areas of land. I wonder whether we should be thinking of having a categorization for. Openland purely, and that's, that's what it's for. Uh because in fact, if you look at, I think it was the future planning map, the city. It it didn't use the old categorization, it was zoned as openland. And that's actually the word that was used on the code and I think that will mislead people. And I think the idea of having, of using the open zone. Uh and then it includes everything else, including giraffe farms. Did you not notice that? Uh but I mean, it's, it's everything, it's, it's everything and I just wonder whether. That that zoning for uh open natural space inside the city. Uh we we should have a separate category, right?
Yeah, that makes sense, like I'm following the common. Like, I think they, you know, that's definitely something that, you know, cities can establish, you know, they just break, they can. And they can take away, they rename, they can put uses in, take uses out, so. I'm, I'm tracking, I got it.
But you see, the city is not going to announce that because it's got so many trees and looks really nice. We are now going to open up Washington Park for building. By hope, Sharon, unless you're hiding something. But when folks who look at a map and see this is zoned as open space. And don't realize that it can also be used as a whole event for giraffes. Uh they're shocked and disappointed and then we end up getting a letter in saying, I misunderstood. I thought this is gonna be open space. I just wonder whether there should be a category for this is known as open space.
Yeah, I think, you know, like related to that specific issue and I think we, when we talked about the the last side, you know, like the last meeting, you know, I mean. Historically, there's been some confusion with it, yeah, and so it's like, how do you clear that confusion? Yeah, okay.
Well, I'd say that is a big problem, because there's a lot of open space for open ozone there. And if we ever get the money to build Bill Nye. Uh, that's gonna be some pretty developable land in there, so you're gonna have a lot of people eyeballing that land. To do something with.
But I think that zone is residential, isn't it?
Arthur, uh uh up to Corthell, for Corthell, it's the future Bill Nye. There to the west, I think it's all uh residential area. Like there's even some fire lines in there too.
Yeah, that ozone's only up there by the area that we were talking about, it's the last little chunk left in that area, so.
You mean along Boulder, right?
Boulder and Beach, yeah, yeah, further south, it's actually zoned R three and I think V one and. L R, that's all on top of my head, so.
I think it's definitely it's a good idea. Well, I would agree. In England, there's, there's a term that always annoyed me, you know, it's called wasteland. You know, they'd say this is wasteland. In fact, it would be natural land, sometimes with a lot of weeds in it. And I'm just wondering whether we're kind of slipping into that, we're just not appreciating the fact that we have. Short grass berry in town and some people like to have that as a place to borrow their dogs and their giraffes.
All right, yeah, well, one little sort of monkey question, in that number one thing is connection. There with shall perform technical services, what is that technical services for?
Chair of commission, that'd be like, for instance, the, when we did the aquifer protection plan. Through the purview of hiring a consultant to perform technical services related to the aquifer protection.
Okay, so like.
That, yeah, that you as a, as a body recognize that there are technical things that, that you may not. Know about, right? And that we may hire people to help provide guidance to you through a plan usually. It could be like, I mean, like first, we could hire someone, let's say, to do an analysis of the ozone and giraffes, right? Okay, and you know, we would, and that may help provide, and that's the technical services component. Um and they, that language is old language though from. I believe it's state statute because remember before we started being more. Uh polished governments, sometimes your planning commission literally didn't have staff. There was no one here, one of you chaired the meeting, one of you was a secretary. You cooked, you followed all the right procedures, you took the minutes, you walked them down to the clerk. If the city had a clerk, maybe the mayor, um and there were times, sometimes you may hire. Technical services directly through the planning commission, but we don't, that doesn't practically happen right now anymore. And you don't have a budget, so you don't get to hire anybody.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions? Saying none, I think we're uh we're covered, thanks Derek. Um, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So.
On the second. Second, um, some, yeah, um, all those members adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Those both, that same name.